All right, and we want to welcome everybody to the 1,170th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on a request for preliminary plat and/or vacating petitions. Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or site plan is denied tonight, this petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing the City Council. And resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing, and the staff has furnished the commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. In this case, we have only one item on our agenda that is really a public hearing on a zoning ordinance revision. So with that, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
President.
Ms. McHugh.
Here.
Mr. Banjo.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Richer.
Chair.
Karen Magno is here, Chairman Wolschow.
Is here, thank you. And also with us tonight, we have Mark Tormina. We also have Stephanie Reese and Jacob Uazy from the Planning Department. And we also have, who else do we have there? Anybody else? Oh, Scott Miller, of course. Along with a guest attendee of our, Paul Lippens, who is from our consultant, who's been working with us on this zoning ordinance revision. So we will introduce them as appropriate as we proceed along the meeting. And again, this is a little bit different meeting in the sense that we don't have site plans and zoning requests on the agenda tonight. What we have before us is a public hearing for a complete revision of the Livonia's zoning ordinance. And we're going to have all discussion around that new document that's been published for some time. We're going to give an opportunity for those in attendance who may wish to speak to this new zoning ordinance, an opportunity to speak, so we can get your input. And then, of course, we'll have questions and comments along the way from commissioners. So with that, Mr. Tormina, we're going to start with item number one. Or actually, we'll go to, we'll have Mr. Karen Magno, our secretary, read out item number one first.
This is petition 2020-12-06-03 submitted by the City of Livonia Planning Commission to consider the adoption of an undated and reformatted Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance and Livonia Vision 21 zoning map. The proposed Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance provides new definitions, creates new zoning districts, and deletes several existing districts. Updates the list of permitted and waiver land uses for each zoning district. Provides new requirements and regulations for lot sizes, building setbacks and lot coverages, off-street parking, signs, alternative energy systems, and other regulations for structure and uses, including a new form-based development option for the city's commercial districts.
Great, thank you, Mr. Secretary. And we're going to go to Mr. Tormina to introduce this item for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Secretary. Yeah, so tonight's public hearing involves consideration of both the new zoning ordinance and zoning map. The task of rewriting the zoning ordinance was authorized by City Council, and it was initiated in 2019, shortly after the official adoption of the Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan. Updating the city's zoning regulations was identified as the number one priority for implementing the Master Plan. The plan also outlines a few more specific recommendations related to updating the zoning ordinance and the zoning map, including consolidating and simplifying the city's many zoning districts, incorporating form-based regulations for the city's special planning areas and mixed development centers, and providing incentives and standards that will encourage sustainable use of land, materials, energy, and resources. The proposed new zoning ordinance and map are officially being referred to as Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance and Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Map. The Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance has been completely reformatted and recodified. By consolidating the zoning districts and reorganizing the other components of the ordinance, the number of articles has been reduced from 31 down to 14. Additionally, hyperlinks, cross-references, tables, and graphics have been added to make the ordinance much easier and efficient to navigate. A good example is Section 3.03, permitted uses by district. This is a single table that provides a comprehensive list of land uses and how each is treated within the 16 different zoning classifications. The 14 articles that make up the new ordinance are as follows. Article one is more or less the preamble, and this is devoted to the title, purpose, and scope of the zoning ordinance. Article two provides definitions for the various words and terms used throughout the ordinance. Article three establishes the zoning districts and map. The big change here is that the total number of zoning districts is being reduced from 26 to 16, resulting in a much better alignment with the nine land use classifications identified in the Livonia 21 Future Land Use Map. In general, the district changes include consolidating the six current single-family districts into three new single-family districts and renaming them Neighborhood 1, Neighborhood 2, and RUF. Consolidating the six multifamily districts into three new multifamily districts that will be called Neighborhood Multifamily 1, Neighborhood Multifamily 2, and Neighborhood Multifamily 3. Consolidating the six commercial districts into four existing districts, C1, C2, C3, and C4. The OS, Office Services, and the PO, Professional Office districts would be eliminated. And then maintaining the PL, Public Land, ML, Light Manufacturing, M1, Limited Manufacturing, M2, Heavy Manufacturing, P, Parking, and MP, Nature Preserve Districts, but eliminating the AG, Agricultural, and RE, Research Engineering Districts. Article four includes the schedule of regulations, another all-inclusive and easy-to-read table that provides the height, area, bulk, and placement standard for every zoning district. Article five, supplemental zoning district standards, establishes and provides regulations with respect to four unique elements of the zoning ordinance, which are not specific to any zoning district. These include Section 501, Special Area Development Control, Section 502, Special Waiver Use Standards for Planned Residential Developments and Planned General Developments, Section 503, Single Family Clustering, and 504, Form-Based Development Option in Commercial Districts. The last one, the Form-Based Regulations, is probably the most significant change. The Form-Based Section is designed to encourage development consistent with the recommended design principles of the Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan. It focuses on three special planning areas, City Center, the former Livonia Mall, and the East Plymouth Road Corridor, but it also can be applied to any commercial zoning district. Section 504 includes design objectives for the location and spacing of buildings, as well as their height, area, bulk, and appearance. Mixed use and medium-high-density housing is encouraged. And finally, the review procedure would differ depending on the scale of the project and whether it conforms to the Form-Based Development Standards. If it does, then a typical site plan review procedure is followed. And conversely, if the project does not conform to the recommended Form-Based Development Standards, then the Special Waiver Use Standards of Section 502 apply, which requires a public hearing. Article six, Standards Applicable to Specific Uses, provide standards and regulations for 60 different land uses, ranging from adult entertainment to wireless communication facilities. The special rules that apply to many of these uses are listed in Section 303, Permitted Uses by District, and are included in Article six and cross-referenced and hyperlinked to assist the user. Article six eliminates significant redundancy because the rules are housed in one location, but may apply to uses in multiple districts. Article seven is the general provisions. Article eight, the next section, excuse me, are the environmental performance standards. This places all the regulations pertaining to environmentally-related uses and issues under a single division, including waste and rubbish facilities, noise and odors, soil removal and dumping. It also includes a section on the city's flood hazard areas. Article nine is the parking, loading, and access management. Article 10, landscaping and screening, and then Article 11, which is devoted to signs, consolidates and puts all of the city's rules for these items into separate, easy-to-find chapters, since in one way or another, they affect nearly all developments and redevelopment projects. Next is Article 12, Nonconformities. This was created due mainly to the unique nature of the subject matter and the fact that several sections are needed to fully address all of the complexities that surround this issue. The next is Article 13, Administrative Procedures, and Article 14, Violations. These are provisions common to all zoning ordinances and typically reside as separate articles or divisions for ease of reference. Also for your consideration this evening is the new Livonia Vision 21 zoning map, which divides the city into 16 districts, including six residential classifications, four commercial classifications, three industrial classifications, one district for parking, one for public lands, and one for the city's nature preserves. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Paul Lippens of McKenna, the consultant hired to help the city with both Phase One, developing a new master plan, as well as Phase Two, adopting the new and improved zoning ordinance and zoning map. Paul?
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public that have come this evening for the public hearing. I'm going to quickly share my screen here. I have a short presentation. Going to cover a few things that most planning commissioners are aware of, but for the benefit of the public, I'm going to recover a little bit about our process this evening and what the next steps are. So the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act is the act that governs the adoption of zoning ordinances. It requires Planning Commission to hold the public hearing that we're holding this evening and to do a notice 15 days in advance of the meeting, which the city did. When a more than 11 properties are affected, the city is not required to send out notifications to individual property owners. As Mark said, we're adopting a new zoning map and a new ordinance that's really for the entire city. So this provision of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act essentially protects the city from having to endure that cost of sending out individual notices to every property in the city. But we have had extensive public engagement throughout the master plan process, and we've been working on this for, ooh, more than a year and a half at this point in time. And so we've had plenty of meetings, and really, we've gotten some good feedback. Certainly, we've been able to engage with the Planning Commission, the ZBA, and City Council. And we're very confident in the draft that we're presenting this evening throughout that process. So where we're at now is the Planning Commission is charged with making a recommendation on the zoning ordinance to City Council, and City Council is the adopting body. When City Council choose to act, should they entertain a motion to adopt, the city is then required to publish a notice, and similar to the public hearing, publish a notice that the amendment has taken place. And then the ordinance takes effect seven days after that publication. So Mark covered a lot of what our accomplishments are, but I think it really starts here with the master plan. So the master plan, Vision 21 Master Plan, identified seven priority projects for the city to achieve with regards to its planning and zoning, and the zoning ordinance was number one. So this is the highest priority planning activity that the city has had going on since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 2018. And I'm very happy to say that through a thorough process, we're at the point this evening where Planning Commission can consider making a recommendation following public comment on the ordinance to City Council. So it's exciting. This has been a really big effort for the city. And I definitely want to thank everyone on Planning Commission for all your feedback and participation throughout this process. One of the other main things I want to point out is that we, at the beginning of the zoning ordinance process, conducted thorough diagnostic analysis. And that analysis formed the basis of work that we engaged on with a technical committee, which included members of Planning Commission, members of the ZBA, as well as the city's attorney staff, code enforcement staff, or inspections, and the Planning Department. One of the things that I like to remind people of is that what the major course of action for relief from a zoning ordinance is variances, and the ZBA is in charge of hearing those variances. So some of that work that we did was go back and evaluate all of the ordinance's recent variances that the city has granted and make sure that the variances that were granted are appropriately handled through the variance procedure and not the type of thing that would be better handled by amending the ordinance. And this kind of test is something we've consistently gone through. You know, what are the items that we feel like are appropriate for the ZBA to handle through a variance that would be unique hardship that would determine or meet the tests for providing a variance versus what things are better acts for Planning Commission discretion or City Council discretion? And those items, we've created a process for consideration and amended the ordinance to handle. You know, a part of that was assessing every part of the ordinance, what the purpose and function of that was, and how the city utilized these procedures to ensure a fair and equitable planning and zoning process. And the way I summarize this is what preserved was, or what works was preserved and what didn't was updated. So we know the city is dedicated to providing high-quality services to residents and business owners, and we wanted to understand those procedures and ensure that this ordinance process wasn't disrupting procedures that work. So that essentially, where we are now, the Planning Department was ready to hit the ground running with the new ordinance. So this time that we've taken particularly to, you know, since we first started talking about this again in December, this last six months, we've been doing a lot of going through each individual section, having multiple people, multiple departments go through and review it, and also having individual conversations with Planning Commissioners, ZBA, council members that had those questions. So you would be prepared when this ordinance came into effect to do your job and understand how the new ordinance will affect the cases that you hear. So thank you for participating in that process as well. Some more on our accomplishments. You know, Mark described in detail some of the district consolidation and how that affects the map, but what we've really done there is clean up the regulatory procedures in the city. When I say we've assessed the purpose, with each district, we went through and asked ourselves, what is the purpose? Is this a district that could be combined, consolidated? Are the dimensional requirements for each of these lots make sense in a way that we can actually distinguish them from another district? And what resulted was a substantive and meaningful consolidation of regulations that I believe results in a more usable framework. That, you know, also, we've done a lot of switching to tables, hyperlinks. We did a thorough analysis on nonconformities, which we've discussed at Planning Commissions in the past. And we know we have substantially reduced nonconformities with these new regulations, meaning that more people can develop the types of uses they want to develop by right without having to, you know, seek a variance or seek to be a legal, nonconforming use as part of the process. Mark also talked about the Form-Based Development Option, but I would just highlight that this Form-Based Development Option is a direct implementation process for the master plan to help implement specific sub-area plans that were developed through the master plan process. And again, we're utilizing well-established city procedures. So again, a little bit more on the district consolidation, 150% reduction in districts, 250% reduction in nonconforming lots. More opportunities for housing. So in creating that Form-Based Development Option, we've created an opportunity to also include appropriate housing in the commercial districts as well. And that is a major move to implement the State of Michigan's redevelopment-ready communities program and to help create missing middle housing opportunities in the city of Livonia. You know, when we started this process, back in when we started the master plan, we knew that was important, and it's only gotten increasingly more important as we've gone through, you know, essentially, increased housing demand in southeast Michigan. So we know that there is demand for more housing if we can create it and create those opportunities. Some maps, these maps show, the red are the existing nonconforming. The green are what will be nonconforming with the new regulations in place. So you see new regulations, more green, less nonconformities. And Mark already showed the zoning map, but I really like how this map helps to implement the master plan. If you look at the future land use plan for the city, you can visually see a direct correlation between the city's land use planning directions and directives in the zoning ordinance. So something that I'm really excited on, and this is a really interesting map. And I think those of you that know me, really, I am very interested in the city of Livonia neighborhoods. The industrial district, the commercial district, the community really functions from a planning perspective in a way that, you know, I would say is logical and also speaks to a history of excellent planning, which has been something that we've been trying to keep going throughout this entire process to really honor the city's planning history with this process. The Form-Based Development Option, it's a carrot, it's not a stick. So what we've created is more ways and more tools for people to develop in ways that they couldn't otherwise develop. So what we're hoping is by creating this new option that includes within it a lot of valuable, these are valuable types of properties, valuable types of development that this incentive will create, really create the types of new, active, vital, walkable developments that the city wants to see. And we're hoping that people even outside of the special area planned districts see this as a usable option that brings economic vitality to their properties. I'm interested to see how this gets picked up, but it's a really exciting approach to Form-Based Coding. It is, I would say, something that the city can expand on, should it be successful. But also, I think it's the appropriate tool for this time. And we spent a lot of time thinking about the right way to do this. And the mechanisms we chose to advance the Form-Based Development Option, I think, are rightly timed and rightly sized for the city of Livonia in this, you know, current planning cycle. The Form-Based Development Procedure, Mark showed this when he was flipping through the ordinance for everyone. But what this shows is really a simple flow chart, right? If you are in an area that's planned for special areas, what we call the special area plans, you can be fast-tracked essentially to approval. It's a simple site plan approval process. Again, if you have a PUD process, you may also wind up in the special waiver just for a PUD. Not every site that wants to use the Form-Based Development Option will need a PUD. So recognizing that there's still some other procedures that could be involved in approval, certainly what we've created is the option to do a site plan process with the Form-Based Development Option when there is a special area plan in place. And I think that's a unique, and that's part of what makes this an incentive, because we've simplified the procedure on how to use these Form-Based options, you know, with the right plan in place. Now, if there's not a special area plan, I think that's okay, too. You can still use the Form-Based Development Option in any of the C districts using the Special Waiver Use Standards. And I think that that makes these options also accessible to the entire city for anyone who has a business and is interested in doing this type of development. We want this option to be available. This is an example of the special area plan for City Center. So you can see that this is, it's a large area. And the type of special area planning, when you start talking about creating city blocks, when you start talking in particular, this is also incorporating with a future plan for the city center and the civic campus for the city of Livonia. So a lot of exciting things, and I think the Form-Based Development Option is something that really makes this now something that could happen should the city attract one developer or multiple developers. Should any of the private landowners in this area want to develop in accordance with the special area plan for City Center, this option is out there now and can be pursued. And this is an example of those building types that really are created as options through the Form-Based Development Options. So building row houses, building live-work units, mixed-use buildings, integrating commercial, office, retail, with housing, building apartments, and building these types of uses in close proximity to each other as a traditional neighborhood. These are the types of things created by the Form-Based Development Option. Wanted to mention briefly some of the other things that we've done. We've updated the sign ordinance to be consistent with the US Supreme Court ruling of Reed versus Town Gilbert. And essentially, what we're doing here is we're removing content to comply with the Supreme Court's ruling. Content-based regulations are no longer acceptable in ordinances. So what does this mean for residents? I think that we're moving towards a total square footage rather than defining certain sign types. So there's more flexibility in the content, but it's time, place, and manner regulations are the types of things that we're still focused on. So we've tried to keep the time, place, and manner requirements consistent between the last version of the ordinance and the version that you're considering this evening. Some more updates, and this is specifically some of the work that we've done with city staff in the past several months in staff review. Mark, I know that you've included this in the report, so I'm going to kind of just quickly cover some of the newer updates. The city is very excited about the Vision 21 name, so we're including it as the Vision 21 ordinance, which I think was the intent from the beginning, but we wanted to make sure that that was codified as part of the process. You know, we've looked at state regulations specifically with respect to liquor license. We want to make sure that those are defined appropriately. Done some work with the ZBA again to understand some of the things that the ZBA that has dealt with in the past to make sure that those issues are dealt with in other ways. So we've created this exotic vehicle regulation section. And now, this will be something that is held, you know, considered a permitted use in M1 and M2 districts. No longer will have to go to the ZBA for No longer will have to go to the ZBA for consideration. Looked at vehicle tow yards. Again, we looked back at state regulations for the Medical Marijuana Act and how the city is permitted to create a separation between caregivers. We added that to the ordinance to, you know, be consistent with what we're allowed to do via medical marijuana acts with respect to zoning and limiting the impacts of caregivers on the city. We've done some more review of the ordinance to make sure that other sections of the ordinance are consistent with the form-based development requirements. There are sections that have limits on building heights. We wanted to make sure that the form-based development option was specifically excluded from those limitations. Did some look at fencing, and then again, some of the newer use like EV charging stations, wanted to make sure that those were permitted and called out, really, they, I think our findings were they would be permitted, but we wanted to specifically list them to encourage these types of uses. And sometimes, using the right language helps to encourage especially innovative uses like UV charging stations. So, again, just in summary for next steps, Planning Commission can hear from any members of the public tonight during this public hearing. Following the public hearing, you could certainly discuss with staff and myself anything that you hear that you would like us to address via questions, and you are able this evening to make a recommendation to council. You would also be able to table and come back if there's something you hear from public tonight, you'd like to give us something to investigate, we can come back at an upcoming meeting with an answer for you on anything we hear tonight as well. So, this is a substantive meeting. We do want to hear from residents tonight, and we do want to make sure the comments that we hear have some thought and are addressed. Upon making a recommendation, as I mentioned at the start of my presentation, upon making a recommendation to council, we would forward this ordinance to council for their consideration with your recommendation. At that time, council may have additional questions. They certainly have the ability to act with a planning commission recommendation. They can also send back an ordinance with questions to planning commission. They can also ask staff to address questions as well. So, you know, we want to make sure that planning commission is comfortable with the ordinance, that we've heard from the public, and that we've addressed any questions that have been raised. And when all of that is done, which I think we are well-prepared for this evening, city council can take a vote with planning commission's recommendation to adopt the ordinance. And if they do, we publish the notice. Seven days after that, we've got a new ordinance in effect in the city. So, thank you for giving me time again tonight to present. I did want to cover a few things just for the benefit of any public that hasn't attended a prior meeting on this. They understand the process and all the work that's gone into creating the ordinance that's under consideration this evening. So, thank you, and I will turn the floor back to the chair.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lippens, for your presentation. It was really informative, and it's something that we've discussed a few times here in the past, but it's at this public hearing where we have an opportunity for perhaps some people who have not heard the presentation before to be able to understand what's going on and why we're making these changes. I also want to thank Mr. Toramina for his background, that he presented as well, both very excellent presentations. So, with that, we have heard the presentations about this ordinance, and we have had a number of meetings previously to review this ordinance and discuss it. We've had a special meeting that was facilitated by our mayor, so the planning commission could work with the city council and have an opportunity for them to at least hear what's coming down the pipe that they're going to have to vote on and see at some point once we approve our recommendations. So, there's been a number of meetings leading up to this, but we do definitely want to have another opportunity here for both the public and for any of our commissioners to ask questions, make comments, and so on. So, this is going to be a very open meeting, a very free-form discussion, and there'll be a little bit of give and take, which we don't normally want to have debates between people, but I don't expect any debates, but I do, if there are any questions, we want to make sure that we can get your questions answered right away. So, we'll make sure that our experts and people here that are able to answer those questions can do so. Before I go to the commission to see if there's any questions, Mark, were there any comments that you received via email or you or your staff from any of the public?
We did not receive any written comments.
Okay, so there's nothing for us to read into the record in regards to that, so I want to make sure we had that noted. And then I'll go to the commission and see if there's anybody on the commission wishing to speak about this ordinance change in this plan. Anyone from the planning commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Smiley.
Only to see how much I appreciate them consolidating this and simplifying this, and I'm sure the ZBA appreciates all the things that ended up being acceptable, being acceptable from the start, without all the hassle. I'm sure the builders and the other, all the other contractors appreciate it, too. And what a lot of work, thank you.
Well, that's a great comment, Mrs. Smiley, and you are right that this is not something that just affects us and the planning of the city council, but it's also going to affect the ZBA and Inspection Department, Building Department, and a number of departments throughout the city, and hopefully will make everybody's job easier, so that's a great comment to make. Any other questions, comments from any commissioners? If not, we'll give you an opportunity here after we hear from the public as well. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this zoning ordinance change? If you are, we're going to ask that you please click the raise hand button. That way, we can recognize you, give you an opportunity to speak, and we'll get your comments on our record. Looking to see if anybody in the comments or in the audience would like to raise their hand. Oh, here we go, we have one person here, let me recognize them. This is, let's see, here we go. Okay, that's interesting. This is Matt Verban, and good evening, sir. We're just going to ask that you unmute yourself when you're ready. You can introduce yourself with your name and address for our record. Mr. Verban?
Yeah, Verban, thanks.
Oh, thank you.
Now, I'm not a Livonia resident, but I'm a Realtor who is representing a property in Livonia, and I'm not sure, I can't remember who I talked with last week, and that's why I'm watching this to learn. I appreciate you taking the time. I was told that there's a discussion about eliminating the office specialty zoning and going to C1, and I was curious as to how that would affect the, I guess, the breadth of what kind of businesses can go into that new zoning from the old zoning.
Okay, great question. Just for minutes, can we get your address?
The address of the business or my address?
Your business address is fine.
28911 West Seven Mile.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Toramina or Mr. Lippens, did you want to speak to that?
I'm happy to answer Mr., answer Mr. Verban's question, and it was me who you spoke to last week, Matt. Matt represents a property owner on Seven Mile Road. If you drove past this building, you would think that it's a retail shopping plaza, but it's actually zoned OS Office Services.
Service.
With the, with the changes proposed and the elimination of the OS zoning district, the zoning of that property would change to C1 local business. The main difference here is that instead of limiting the uses under the OS district to general office and medical office uses primarily, the C1 would allow not only office uses but also local retail shops. So, general retail is something that would be treated as a permitted use. I will say that it is not intended to allow highway service uses such as automotive repair or full-service restaurants or things like that, but carryouts, limited service, and those types of uses while, while allowed, may be subject to a special waiver use approval process, but general retail uses would be treated as a use by right. And so, to that extent, it'll expand the opportunities for the Maplewood Plaza. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, significantly, because that's, I mean, I've been tasked to try to rent this 10-unit place, there's three openings, and there's like 14 uses legal right now, and I already have seven of them in, and it's kind of, you know, really limited who we could rent to. And as we were trying to find out if we could get some exclusions, but now that you're talking about this, if this passes, we don't have to ask for as many exclusions or exceptions, sorry.
Exactly, and I think that's been one of the, one of the goals of this ordinance rewrite is to try to broaden, in many cases, each of these areas to some extent so that we have more conforming uses, less special waivers and nonconforming properties throughout the city. So, this certainly would hopefully work well for the property that you're representing, so. So, we appreciate your comments. Is there anything else, Mr. Verban, that you wanted to mention?
Well, thanks for saying my name, right? It's like 50/50 with most people at best, but, so if, if, from what I was listening to with the prior gentleman giving the presentation, if this passes, you what, put a seven-day notice unless somebody wants to say, no, stop the presses, and then it becomes rule or law after that, is that how it works?
Right, so assuming that we make a resolution tonight, which we'll see what the outcome is, we have the option to either table this or discuss it further, or we could make a approving resolution to send this to city council with a recommendation that it be approved. It then would go to city council, and city council could, is going to have an opportunity to go through a study and regular meeting to review this. Sometimes, they may send it to a committee, it's, they kind of go through their whole, their process, and then once it's eventually finalized by the city council, then is when the seven-day period will occur, and it's just really for publication, and it's an opportunity, I believe, also for the mayor to veto the council's action if she chooses to, but that's kind of the same process that most of our petitions go through.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, sir, and thank you for coming tonight. We're going to let you go back into our audience. You can continue to watch this meeting as it plays out, so thanks for coming. All right, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? Or speak to it, ask questions? If so, you are welcome to click raise hand. And I don't see anyone else raising their hand. So, again, I'm going to go back to our commissioners and see if there's anybody on the commission wishing to ask any questions or speak to this item.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Toramina is with, under the new zoning ordinance, is a form of residential permissible in the C1 zoning district. There might be another option for Mr. Verban.
Yeah, that's a, it's a small, relatively small property, so the practicality of residential use there would be very limited, I would say, but your question is, is a good one as it may affect other C1 or C2 zone properties, and the answer is yes. With the form-based regulations that Paul went over in some detail, mixed-use development, live-work, and those types of projects would be considered, would be allowed under special requirements. So, so let's, let's just say it's a commercially-zoned property that is not located within a special planning area, yet an owner or developer wanted to take advantage of the form-based regulations and develop a mixed-use project. They could do that, it just wouldn't be the expedited review process, as was mentioned by Paul, the site plan review, it would have to undergo a special review process, a special waiver use process, but the mixture of uses would in fact be allowed in the C2 zoning under this ordinance. Something that we've seen in the past, just a little bit different treatment here with much better guidelines in terms of how those uses could be developed. Does that, does that help?
That's a good explanation, Mr. Toramina. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Wilshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura, great question. Any other questions, comments from any of our commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to, for everyone to fully understand where this would go, should the planning commission adopt an approving resolution, the city council office would schedule a public hearing. Council would hold a public hearing, the matter would then be sent to a regular meeting for direction, and if that direction is approving, then the law department would be instructed to prepare the necessary paperwork for first reading. Then, there's two more steps following that, first reading, and then second reading and roll call, and then finally, the publication, which you referred to. So, even under a best-case scenario, we're still looking at probably a couple of months of review left in this process. I know that interests Mr. Verban, so this is, this is a very deliberate process, obviously, which attempts to get as much public input as possible is why it's designed that way, so.
That's a great comment, Mr. Toramina, and it's very important that, that we have that process because it is, as you said, very deliberate and has many steps as it goes forward, so there'll be many more opportunities for Mr. Verban or anyone else watching this meeting or maybe learning about it through media publications and so on who may want to add their comments to attend one of those council meetings or any of those other processes to get their input incorporated or their questions answered, so that's, that's very good. Do we have any other questions or comments from anybody on the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
I think this question's for Mark or Paul. The Form-Based Development Theory Program, where else has that been tried? Is there anywhere local that someone else has tried that, that you can kind of point
Mr. Lippens, did you want to comment on that?
Sure, I would actually say including a form-based development option is, is the norm, so it's the best practice for really any modern ordinance. I think some of the ordinances that we looked at that my firm has developed in the past several years were the To Come See zoning ordinance, which has a form-based section that's based on the SMART code. SMART code is a model code that is put out by, well, supported by the Congress for New It's a, it's a good model, and it's widely respected, and so the To Come See version, To Come See's code is kind of more SMART code. We went in another direction, which is a building types code similar to the form-based development option. Similar to the form-based development option in, in the Van Guren code, but also we looked at. A code that I, I was a manager for developing a downtown form-based code. For the city of Sault Ste. Marie. I worked on a form-based development option on the city of Battle Creek. Recently. We've been also working through the adoption of process with the city of Holland, which is out on the west side of the state. But we've been doing zoning overhaul with them over the last several years. I mean, so those are kind of current projects, but I, and they're actually projects that I'm working on, so those are the easiest ones for me to tell you about. But I'm sure there's a number of ones that I'm not working on that also include form-based development options. I would say, you know, one of the things we're doing in the state of Michigan is, you know. The whole industry and all of our communities were working on redevelopment-ready communities, this is one of the major planning initiatives. State of Michigan's been undergoing now for several years. And including a form-based development option and particularly looking at innovative ways, innovative ways to incorporate housing into codes. Is a recommended best practice from redevelopment-ready communities as well, so. Just to give you a little bit of, you know, comfort. Commissioner with where we're going in here, I would say that this is really a standard practice and the, the way that we've done it for Livonia is tailored to this community. And an understanding of your procedures.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Karen Magno, any other questions or comments from any of our commissioners? There's a, one more time, I'm going to go to our audience and just make sure there's no one else in our audience wishing to speak on this item, if so, you can click raise hand. Just want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to, to speak here. I don't see anyone else clicking raise hand. So with that. I believe we can close the public hearing at this point, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Willshaw.
Mr. Ventura.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. That having conducted a public hearing with regard to petition 2020-12-06-03. Submitted by the city planning commission pursuant to council resolution number 09-19. In connection with Phase 2 of Livonia Vision 21 Contract for the Preparation of a Comprehensive Update. To the, to the city of Livonia zoning ordinance. The city planning commission does hereby recommend. Approval of Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance Version 6.0. Dated June 1st, 2021. Prepared by McKenna and the Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Map. Dated June 1st, 2021, as prepared by the city of Livonia Planning Commission. For the following reasons. Number one, that this comprehensive rewrite of the city zoning or zoning regulations. Is the culmination of over two years of hard work. By the Zoning Ordinance Technical Committee, including several special study meetings of the planning commission. And of a joint work session with the city council and members of the zoning board of appeals. Number two, that the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance. And the Livonia Vision 21 zoning map are in full compliance. With the requirements of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act PA 110 of 2006 as amended. Number three, that the overall organization recodification and functionality. Of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance is a substantial improvement over the existing ordinance. And streamlines all of the city's zoning regulations in a more efficient, effective and user-friendly format. Number four. Adoption of Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance achieves the number one priority project as identified in the three-year priority project list. In Book Four, Strategic Development of the Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan. Which recommends updating the zoning ordinance to jumpstart Livonia Vision 21 implementation. Number five. Adoption of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance and the Livonia Vision 21 zoning map. Is consistent with the recommended revisions to zoning ordinance and zoning map. As outlined in Book Four, Strategic Development of the Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan, including. A. Consolidating and simplifying the city's one-family residential zoning districts. To reduce the number of non-conforming lots. B. Consolidating and simplifying the city's multiple-family residential zoning districts and providing new incentives and standards. To encourage infill, infill housing and neighborhood investment. C. Consolidating and simplifying the city's commercial zoning districts. By eliminating the office districts and incorporating the eligible uses and standards into the corresponding corridor in regional districts. D. Incorporating form-based regulations for the city's special planning areas, mixed development centers and commercial districts. And E. Providing incentives and standards that will encourage sustainable use of land, materials, energy and resources.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ventura, is there support for that motion?
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance and map. Offered by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mrs. McQ, is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, I just wanted to make a quick comment that this has been a long process, obviously, as Mr. Toramina and Mr. Lippens have, have mentioned, and of course, the commission is very aware of. It's taken a number of years, or years of work between the master plan and this ordinance revision to get to this point. It's not necessarily the most exciting stuff in the world when you, to read, we all know that. But it's, it's very, it's very important because this is a part of our ordinances that have not been changed. They've been modified throughout the years, but this is a complete beginning from scratch, this is taking everything that we have. As Mr. Lippens pointed out, keeping the best of what we have, updating what we need to update so that it's more easy and, and user-friendly. To the community, to developers and to residents, and. This has been a lot of work by, by Mr. Toramina, his staff, Mr. Lippens from. McKenna and his associates that have helped him and, and many, many people throughout the city, so. We're not going to necessarily get to talk about this a whole heck of a lot more, so as it goes on to council, so I just wanted to thank everybody. Who's worked on this and put blood, sweat and tears into getting us to this point, and. So thank you to everybody for, for that work, and I think this is probably the most exciting and significant thing that we're going to be doing this year. Not only as a commission, but also as a city as this proceeds, so. So even though it's not super exciting looking, it is a very exciting and important. Change that we're making here today as we make this recommendation, so thank you to everyone for that. If there's no other questions or comments from anybody, then I'll go to the secretary to call the roll on a motion to approve.
Mr. Ventura.
Vote aye.
Mrs. McQ.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mr. Banjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye, Chair Willshaw.
Votes aye, and the motion passes, the ordinance will go on to city council with an approving recommendation, congratulations to everybody for your hard work. And thank you, Mr. Lippens, for coming tonight, we appreciate your, your attendance. And with that, we only have one other item on our agenda tonight, Mr. Secretary.
Number, number two is the approval of the minutes of the 1,169 public hearing and regular meeting. Held by the planning commission on May 18th, 2021.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve those?
I'll make that motion.
And support from?
Board.
Oh, we got a lot of people on that one, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Karen Magno and support I heard from Mr. Long first. If there is, let's take a little quick look here, see if I can, yeah, let's, I can, so look and see if anybody missing on that one. Nobody was missing, so if there is no objection, I think we can safely show seven to approve that meeting, those minutes, is there any objection from anybody? I don't see anybody waving their arms or screaming, so with that, we'll mark that seven to approve that, those minutes, thank you, Mr. Secretary. And that takes us to the end of our agenda, there's nothing else on it tonight, this was an easy agenda. Is there any other business to come before the planning commission this evening? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn.
And that's supported by. All right, we got a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mr. Banjero. If there's no objection, I think we can show seven to approve the motion to adjourn as well. And I see no objections, so we'll note that, and that does conclude this meeting tonight, we do want to thank the Livonia Television staff. For their contribution to bringing this meeting to the public, and we want to again thank not only our planning commission staff, Mr. Lippens and others. For being here tonight and wish everybody in the community, everyone in Livonia, a good evening.
Have a great night.
Good night.